If it works, we're lucky. It's constructive. All right. Meeting of the planning board, July 10th. It is 7 o'clock. It started. Is everyone ready? Well, those present, we have an opportunity to review the minutes. Any questions? Comments? Doug's one of our other board members is on the line.
And he is, he has gone for work purposes. So he is permitted to come on remotely. We'll be thanking for doing that.
Motion to approve the minutes. I'll move. Daniel Second. Favor. Doug's there. Three, Doug, yes?
Aye.
Aye. Great. And he's working on getting to a location where he can have his camera on. All right. Any more sessions for the next?
Not yet.
Not yet. We did not have any work sessions this week. So I'm going to jump right into the agenda. First up, we have the wireless, Verizon Wireless Facility. We have Bill Johnson, who is our consultant, online. I'm going to ask him to give us just a five-minute overview. Keep it kind of brief. What we're looking to do today is make recommendation to the ZBA. We worked fairly tirelessly on this one. But this is a recommendation to the ZBA for a special use permit for the tower. So, Bill, if you wouldn't mind, can you just giving us a five-minute overview of your findings? And then we'll kind of proceed from there.
Glad to do that. Good evening. I'm Bill Johnson, Professor Emeris at Rochester Institute of Technology. I'll try to talk slower so actually my words come out. So we have gone over this application, you know, in several phases. We started off with a taller tower and took a look at the opportunity for reducing the height. Looked at the propagation plots and the coverage data for that. And what we noted is at the lower height, the gaps to the north, northwest and southeast that were there at the originally proposed height were still there. They're a little larger, but not that much larger. And Verizon would have to address those gaps anyway if they were going to solve that particular problem. So we recommended that the height be reduced. So the tower would be 100 feet. The antenna centerline, which is the measure that we use as RF engineers, is about 95 feet, just five feet below the top of the tower. And Verizon has agreed to that. And they reserved the right, though, if once the site is built, if the performance of the site is not adequate for their purposes by their measurements, to consider raising the height of the tower back to the original height, which is about 20 feet higher than what they're currently proposing right now. We did have some concerns about, you know, what would be the triggers? What would be the criteria that would be used to make that evaluation? And that question is still on the table at this point. Other items, we always note whether or not there's an FAA marking and lighting requirement. Verizon submitted a very thorough response to that in their FAA analysis. There is no marking and lighting requirements that are present. And I believe tonight, we're going to be hearing from Verizon's RF engineer about what their plans would be to fill the gaps that remain. Even if they had built the tower at 120 feet, there's gaps. What would they do to fill those gaps, if anything? So that's one of the items that I hope on the agenda tonight to be able to hear that. But right now, we're looking at a 100-foot tower, 95-foot antenna centerline. And I know that there's some concerns about the use.
Everyone please mute themselves and zoom.
I'm not sure who that is.
It's Mary.
I'm sorry, I'll stand by. I'm not hearing what the questions are.
Sorry, we're just trying to get people to mute themselves. Yep. There you go.
And Grant can be muted.
And Doug.
And Doug's not allowed to be muted.
He is.
You're good, Bill. Thank you.
Bill, you're good.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, I'm sorry. So I understand that there may be concerns about human exposure to the emissions from the tower. So, you know, let me just preface that, that that is actually something that Congress, federal law, has taken off the table for discussion. But let me give you some quick background on that. If there are any issues with radio frequency exposure from wireless communications, it's from your cellphone, not from the tower. We have TV and radio stations that are broadcasting and are emitting much stronger signals than the sort of signals you'd see from a cellular base station. Even just a few feet away from the antennas, you would be well below the FCC thresholds for human exposure. But here, we're 100 feet at the ground. And the antennas are actually designed in such a way, well, let me back up. And say, an analogy to this is like a lighthouse at the coast of the ocean. The lighthouses have what's called a Fresnel lens. And the Fresnel lens puts most of the light out toward the horizon because that's where the ships are going to be, and just a little bit down toward the ground. The antennas on a base station are exactly the same way. They put the energy in about a 10-degree wedge out toward the horizon. Down to the ground, if you're below the tower, you're probably getting very, very little signal. And that's an operational advantage for the wireless communications. Because if you're very close to the base station, a mobile phone transmitting could actually overwhelm the receiver. So they really don't want to have a lot of signal coming into the system. So the antennas are particularly tuned in such a way that the energy goes over your head off to the horizon. As you move away from the base station, you start to come into that wedge. Now you get more of the energy, but you're further away, so it's not as strong. So I guess the takeaway from that is that while there will be some exposure, the exposure is probably around 1% to 2% of what the federal communications and Congress have approved as the maximum human exposure. So I know that's a concern, and I know there's always some discussion about this sort of thing. But that is something legally that's actually off the table because Verizon has provided an analysis that shows that their site will comply with FCC emission regulations. And the site therefore cannot be considered as an emission problem in the community. So I know that may not be a popular view, but if, that's something that Congress has established. It's in federal law. And until they change, or if they change the federal law, that's what we as municipal body need to deal with.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you just talk for like one more minute about what we are able to look at as a planning board?
Absolutely, yeah. So the real seminal case about this, it goes back to the early 2000s. It's called Sprint versus Wilith. And that is applicable in New York State and in everywhere the Second Circuit is involved. In Sprint versus Wilith, there was, there was a three-pronged analysis that was used. First of all, to establish whether or not there is a substantial gap that needs to be filled. We, Professor Ciccarelli and I have already looked at that. And they have demonstrated adequately that there is a significant gap that needs to be filled. The second question is whether or not the proposed site adequately fills that need. And we have looked at both user capacity, that's the number of users that can access sites in the vicinity, plus the site that's being installed. And whether or not the coverage is adequate to serve the area that was experiencing this significant coverage gap. And the answer to that question was yes, that has been demonstrated. The third prong, and this is the one that is the most difficult for a planning and zoning board to deal with, is whether or not the proposed site is the minimum intrusion upon the community. So the minimum intrusion on the community could be a reduced tower height. Verizon has already agreed to that. They've dropped the height of the tower by 20 feet. It could be a relocation of the site to some other location. But in the vicinity where they have a coverage gap, it's mostly residential areas. So this particular location is on the school district property, which, you know, is, you know, they have a lot of land, relatively speaking. It's reasonably away from the residences. There are a few that it's closer to, but for the most part, it's away from the residences. So, you know, the job of the planning board at this point is to take a look and say, of all the possibilities, moving the site to another location, reducing height, is this deemed to be the minimum intrusion upon the community? So unfortunately, that's not a question that Professor Ciccarelli and I can answer. But we have come to the point where we have dropped that height of the tower. We've looked at the area around the school district where, or the school district property, and that's where the gap is located. And, you know, if we move that off of this school district property, it would have to go into the residential area. And certainly, that would be a much more, at least by my impression, that would be a much more intrusive intrusion on the community. So that's the sort of thing that the planning board needs to look at. Is this the minimum intrusion on the community? Is it the best aesthetic approach? If a tower has to go in, is this the best that it can be? Are there other things that can be done? And that's really, at this point, where the planning board needs to focus its attention is on that minimum intrusion question.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right. So with some of those questions that we want to ask, you're going to be the target of some of these questions.
Go ahead.
Should I stand?
Jared, please do.
Introduce yourself.
Good evening, members of the board. It's nice to see you again. Jared Lustkrimniks and Kibadi are presenting Verizon Wireless. With me is Tim Richmond. He's the one on the left. Tim Zarnecki is the RF engineer for Verizon for this project. We did receive Professor Johnson and Professor Ciccarelli's report dated July 2nd. We've attempted to respond to it by providing the FAA, the latest FAA study that we have with regard to it that was actually run for the taller tower. It said there was no issue, and clearly, obviously, being 20 foot short is not going to mean to be letting. Secondly, just to follow up on a statement that Professor Johnson said about the percentage of the federal level with regard to emissions. We were able to obtain, based on the lower height, an updated emissions study from Tim Alexander and the Waterford Group. Actually, at the base of the tower, it's going to be 0.49% of the federal limitation. I'll provide that. Not may have other copies if anybody wants that, just to close that loop. I know there was, there were a couple of questions that Professor Johnson and Mr. Ciccarelli noted. The question is, how is Verizon planning to close the gap surrounding the Adinger Drive site? The answer is, there are no plans at this point to close the gap. So there is, Verizon has a set of projects out a couple of years. This one, as I said at the last time I spoke to you, this project's been going on since pre-COVID. It's five years old. It takes a long time to develop these projects. The only other project we have slated for the Town of DeWitt, may not be in the Town of DeWitt. It's right on the town boundary up by the Syracuse Airport. So maybe in Salina, maybe in the town. But that's, that's the only other Town of DeWitt project that's in the queue. Not even sure where it's going, but they do know they need another site up near the airport. So there are no plans to fill the gap at this point. I think what will happen is, we indicated in the, in our response letter, once this tower is up and running, I think reasonable RF design engineers or professors may be, to be able to disagree again with the impact of this. I think Verizon's willing to accept the 100-foot tower. It's not, it's not doing a, it's not saying here, we're not going to go through the exercise of a 20-foot extension unless it's deemed to be necessary. And we don't, we've got so much work to do, it's unlikely that.
So with that, let me just ask a question. So with the 120-foot tower, there were still gaps. You recognize, and still, I mean, you're RF engineer, everybody recognizes there's still gaps. So the solution, by just adding 20 feet, doesn't necessarily close the gap. Still gaps would exist.
Still gaps. I think there's an important point here that I know Professor, I don't know which Professor Tim spoke to, Professor Ciccarelli, he said, I know that the two professors, for lack of a better word to describe it, are focusing on the coverage edge. But I think what Tim's also concerned about is within the boundaries of the coverage area, the 20-foot reduction will also impact coverage within the coverage area. So again, it's, it will impact some people that are not at the edges inside of the coverage area are going to have diminished coverage inside. And I know Professor Ciccarelli was speaking to Tim, acknowledged that that was an issue. Again, we're not here to, we're not coming back to DeWitt for 20 feet unless there's a, there's a real problem here. And we won't know the extent of the problem. We're going to accept it. We understand the issue about what the professors have said. And we will pursue the 20-foot reduced height. They can only come in here if there's a need. When we get to the next, the next site, wherever that would be, trying to fill the gaps, we won't know that until we get what the best solution is, until this is up and running. And again, demand continues to increase on the, on the, on the network. So what we need now, just from the operational use and et cetera is happening, could be different two or three years down the road. And they're always adjusting based on demand inside the network. So again, right now, there are no plans for additional towers. If there were, it would be years out. And that's where we are.
Is there any criteria in this situation that you anticipate would potentially trigger new towers or having to raise this tower?
Again, Tim said we would end up doing a drag test after this is on. And then he will evaluate the drag test data against the plots that are demonstrated in, that have been provided for the 20-foot height reduction, et cetera. And I think, Tim, it's fair to say that if it, if the coverage matches what's in the 20-foot height reduction is right at, right at the baseline where we accept, where we accepted. Unless there was some deficiency that didn't show up in the plots that we won't see until after it's on and operating, I think at that point, they would evaluate the need or whether they might address it with a small cell or something else. Again, they'll understand what's happening and adjust the network accordingly.
Can you say a little bit more about what is, what is known of the anticipated remaining gaps? I'm one of the town members who has been very concerned about the gaps that we have.
I'm going to, I'm going to just take this opportunity. We'll, we'll let the question stand right now, but this is not a public hearing. We've closed the public hearings, so this is just a conversation with the planning board and the applicants. Okay? I welcome if there are any questions that, provide them to Alana in written form.
Well, we're going to, we're going to have a public hearing. This will be on the zoning board of appeals agenda for August, or July 21st. And that will be a public hearing if anyone would like to come and ask questions or give your opinion.
I think it's important for everybody to, just not to answer that question specifically, but the coverage that, the coverage areas that will be covered by this and the coverage, the area that will not be covered is documented in our, in our response to the lower height question in our June 26 submission. So I think it's, it's a picture worth a thousand words. That's where the coverage is shown and the gap shown as well.
Can we talk a little bit about the enclosure? That's the one thing we haven't really talked about. You have new fence materials, and can you kind of talk about what's proposed for that?
Well, we've had a couple of iterations of fence since our last visit. We were trying to meet, there was a question about the fence. We went to the school district. The school district has a certain style of fencing that's in and around the transportation area. And they are also planning to do additional, as we noted in our plan, an additional building on the site for school district, I assume, school district transportation uses. And they had suggested that we match the fence to the compound, to the surrounding school district fence, so it's all together similar. In consultation with Ms. Cantrell, following that suggestion, I believe, whether it was the planning board or Ms. Cantrell or whomever, suggested an alternative fence design that we have incorporated, and we've incorporated the design as suggested into it. So we're, we're two removed from our last appearance before the board.
Yeah, can you talk about what it is?
It's a, it's a, I guess I can show you a picture of it. It's a, it's a.
Can you tell us what page it's on? We can pull it up from your.
I've got to look and see. It's on the site plan, package, page CA 501.
Is it in?
Jared, can you move it just a little?
I'm sorry. You're good. It's just, it's.
Yeah, it's an, I want to say it's an iron aluminum.
What exhibit is this?
It's exhibit Y.
So originally, what was proposed was a chain link fence with the vinyl slats.
Correct. And then we changed the color to match the school district. And then there was the design. So it's not, no longer a chain link fence. It's an aluminum, I guess, security fence that, I guess, in the pictures.
It's, it's, it's very large.
While that's coming up, in addition to kind of that area, is there, how is Verizon going to have access? Do they need a right of way across the school property?
They do. They have, we have an easement to get to the site.
You have an easement?
It's part of our lease with the school district.
Okay. Generator, emergency power, what is the?
Do you know what page it is?
It's, I'm sorry, the fence? It's sheet CA 501. And you're not in the, you're not in line. Sorry.
No, I'm not.
So in terms of the generator, Tim, do we have a generator planned for this site?
I don't think so. Usually, we do require backup power, but not on every single site. Last pages, but I don't think we do have enough proposed.
There's a lot of information on the property valuation.
We have a battery cabinet. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I think it back. 50-watt generator. Yep. Diesel generators proposed on the, within the same.
Within that enclosure?
Yes. All within the same enclosure.
You said 50 watt?
It's your loss.
Thank you.
Just a tiny, like all.
Little Honda one?
Just a little plug.
Tiny.
And that'll be tested monthly?
Weekly.
Weekly?
In the morning, like it's usually Tuesday at 10 o'clock in the morning.
For how long?
It's usually 30 minutes or so.
And we'll add additional kind of planted screenings up around.
Okay, we will go back up for a second.
There you go.
That was the original fence that the school district wanted to match? The chain link with the vinyl slats?
I could have seen.
Darn, we said that.
They want us to match that.
It's like a construction fence.
It was chain link with some.
No, I know. I'm just being.
Yeah, and they're building that open barn to house all that equipment there too, so.
So then if you scroll down.
Yeah, so if you keep scrolling, you'll see the design.
I don't care why the fence, we're not going to use. I just want to.
Here it is. Here's the design. We don't have to go to the plans. This is the exact.
Yep.
So vertical picket, security fence?
Yes.
I don't know. It's the same fence style that was approved for Verizon. I'm sorry, for National Grid.
Correct.
Yes. Yeah, that was the, that was where the suggestion came from. And, and then the color of it, we're just using galvanized or are we painting it or?
I thought it was going to be black based on the design.
Move the dark.
Whatever the planning board thinks.
I thought I saw two different.
Since no Max powder, was it finished, no Max powder?
I think the information is beyond the drawings, not on the sheet.
Yeah, maybe that was what it was. I thought I saw two different.
So before we proceed to final, somewhere down the line, we want to make sure that we're.
Paint any color you want. Just tell us.
I think, don't paint it. Just get it factory finish.
Yeah, make it, make it easy for.
Yeah, whatever color, factory finish you.
And the location, you've had discussions with the school. There's no moving the tower closer to the water tower? I mean.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't reiterate that. I was, that was all in our submission. You had asked us to move it to the north of the school district. We met with the school district, with the superintendent, and their, I think his title is Director of Operations. There's an athletic facility complex and a cross-country trail that comes right to the north of the compound. They, they thought moving it to the north would be right immediately adjacent to the soccer field. It looks like a soccer field, a rectangular field. And they said having it in amongst the buses was more safe from their perspective. In the middle of the field, it became obstruction to do the athletics, as well as more of a constructed nuisance for the children. Because in the bus area, the students would not be approaching that. So they, they respectfully declined the suggestion.
We did slightly change the configuration of the compound that pushed it up to that corner.
We did move it.
Yeah. I was going to say, I thought it moved closer to the bus garage and a little bit more towards the water tower.
That's, that's where I think we were trying to.
Yeah.
But not as far apart as we.
We were west.
We would have liked to have seen it just right up in there, but I don't think.
At least it was about 15 feet north and 15, 13 feet the other way. And the compound moved, the tower stayed in the same place, but we just reconfigured the compound into the hill just a little bit more by the water tower.
Okay. Okay. Kevin, any other questions right now?
So is there any grading and access road and stuff like that that we're looking at?
No, honestly, it's, there's grading, obviously, for the compound. But there is a bit for the, what I want to call the driveway proper to the facility. But we're, again, we're mostly utilizing the existing transportation driveway, et cetera, and parking lot to get to the site.
There is a driveway leading up to the water tank now, and it bears off from where that equipment is. We're just utilizing it. I'm sure that puts more pressure run down, but just to approve it.
How often do you guys have?
After crossing that hill.
How often do you guys have people out there?
One to two times a month, depending on lots, more is done remote, A, whenever there's needed to be someone out. But typically, there's someone visiting the site one to two times a month.
Do you have any security cameras or anything on it?
Verizon doesn't talk about its security, but trust, if someone's in the compound, they'll know.
I feel like that's not true. He can there now.
Doug, you got any other questions?
Yeah, just, just two questions. So just to clarify, the baseline height that the 100-foot is measured from, is that measured from average or from the top of, I guess, the drumlin that this is built upon? Just to, just to make sure that's, that's clear in the documents. And then the second question I have is, I have noticed on a number of different towers that there are platforms for avian wildlife. And I just wonder if that's by design or if that's just, you know, they move in on their own? And how do you service that? And what's your position on that?
We, because the antennas are right at the top of the tower, there will be no nesting at the, at the top of the tower that you typically see those avian platforms on, where you see them. So there will be no, no birds on the top of the tower. It's with regard to the baseline, in the plans, there's an AMSL identified. It's 635.5, I'm sorry, in my eyes, 635.4 above mean sea level is noted on the plans. That's the baseline.
And relative to, you know, the finished elevation?
What is it?
Yeah.
Let me see, you've got the topo map here. The topo.
Like almost, you want to know what the field is at, Doug? And then you want to know, like, where the base measurement starts at?
The, the parking lot is about 635. 629 inside the, it's 629 towards the bus garage, and then it starts climbing up to the water tank.
Yep.
And the water tank is somewhere around 648 or 649. So it's about 15 feet, the base of the tower, lower than the water tank. That's helpful. It's all noted on VA 100. If you, where you go back one, you'll see the topo. A little bit more, I'm sorry. Here it is. So it's about, this is 629. This is 635. You can see it goes up dramatically towards the, towards the water tank.
So we're kind of in the middle of where the bus garage and then the water tank's level was. If I, because I think the numbers you gave us were a little out of order. But I think that's where we were.
Yeah, it gradually goes up from where the bus.
Yeah, and we're kind of in the middle. Yeah. Is that good, Doug?
No, thank you. I just wanted to make sure it was clearly identified.
Okay.
And again, I think you asked about the landscape. We've put extensive landscaping around the compound. And then again, we. And again, to your, I think you asked about the landscape, when we put extensive landscaping around the compound, and then again, we added some additional trees, uh, to the south of the, uh, I guess it technically would be to the west, uh, along the boundary of the, uh, uh, the parking, or the bus garage, parking area, and the adjacent homes. As you see on the.
Great. Thank you for the update, are there other questions?
My home's on the other side.
I'm, I'm not.
Old core.
Like, over here? Like this, this area here?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I, no, we, we didn't view the view as, uh, again, that's where we, where the, the, the tower show is, is more visible, uh, in that area towards the, the compound than, than we saw. We didn't see the need to add more landscaping here.
Bill, thank you for the update, Jared, thank you. Then other questions, I'm gonna, for, uh, recommendation to the Z B A. Pardon my. Huh? Take a deep breath, settle in. Recommendation to the zoning board of appeals, uh, July tenth, twenty twenty-five, for the Verizon cellular, uh, injured, injured drive to the Wood School. Pursuant to chapter one seventy-two of the code, the town of DeWitt, cellular tower as proposed by the applicant must obtain both a specific use permit from the zoning board of appeals, and site plan approval from the town of DeWitt planning board. This resolution serves as the recommendation for, or from the planning board as a positive recommendation for the granting of a specific use permit. The cellular tower structure per this application is intended to be located at the premises of the Jamesville DeWitt High School, which is located in a residential zoning district of the town of DeWitt, and is also surrounded by residential zoning districts and residential uses, primarily single-family dwellings. Accordingly, and as per the code, the applicant must meet the substantial burden as follows. P W S towers and antennas shall not be permitted in residential districts or within seven hundred and fifty feet of a residential district unless the applicant can show an undue hardship that the applicant would not be able to provide service to the area without locating in the described area. The applicant has demonstrated that it is unable to co-locate on an existing tower or structure, nor can it locate a new or second P W S tower on a non-residential property where there is an existing tower or structure. This board held a public hearing on the application after notice to all property owners within fifteen hundred foot radius of the intended structure. This perimeter of notice is not required by the town of DeWitt, town code, however, the board determines such notice as desirable under the circumstances present. At the public hearing, all persons present were heard, among the public present, one member of the public presented a letter signed by the neighboring property owners in opposition of the tower installation. Several other members to the public expressed support of the project. Public support and/or opposition is intended to be informative to the board, but may not by law form the sole reason for any determination by the planning board. This board was presented with a lease signed by the school district for the leasing of the land for the cellular installation, and the superintendent of the Jamesville DeWitt School District was present at a public meeting. Early in the application process, the applicant flew, or quotes, balloons at the proposed location, and also provided the visual simulation of the height in relation to various locations near and far from the project. All of these were part of the public record. At the request of the board, a second balloon flying was set up by the applicant, and all neighbors within fifteen hundred feet were notified of same. This board chose and hired a professional consultant equipped to analyze the technical matters present by the, presented by the applicant in connection with this application, and in context of the federal regulations and local ordinances involving his use. The findings and recommendations of the consultant have been reviewed by this board and are part of the, uh, record of this application. After several meetings with the applicant, review of rele, uh, review of relevant criteria for necessary cellular coverage, the federal and local laws, and, and advice? And advise?
Okay.
Is it advise or advise?
Advice of the board.
An advice of the board. Um, the board consultant and planning board, the applicant agreed to lower the height of the tower to one hundred feet, which was a change to their original request of one hundred and twenty feet. This canceled, uh, canceled the need for a variance on height per the town of DeWitt code, leaving, uh, specific permit and site plan approvals being required. The applicant has sustained their burden of demonstrating that the given, uh, constraints of the land available for erection of a tower, challenging topography coupled with approving gaps in cellular coverage, the location of the tower on premises at the Jamesville DeWitt School is appropriate. The exact location of the tower on the premises was also carefully reviewed by this board, and it is further determined that the location proposed is the least intrusive to both the neighbors and the students of the school. Subject to reasonable legal criteria, which is, which the applicant has met and the board consultant has affirmed, the cellular tower enjoys the legal status of a semi-public utility. In that regard, this board finds that the location proposed by the applicant at the height of one hundred feet presents the least impact on surrounding properties and uses, according to this board. Uh, accordingly, this board recommends that the zoning board of appeals grant the specific use permit. Motion to approve, Kevin, Jenny, all in favor, aye?
Doug aye.
Great, so this little recommendation, recommendation will go to Z B A, um, once you get through Z B A, you'll be back in front of us again for.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, next up, we're shifting from Verizon Wireless to Verizon Wireless. So we had the applicant present for your landmark site.
Uh, yes, uh, Brian O'Connor from, uh, Frolling Sign Company.
Welcome. Uh, you can just take two minutes, uh, Julie's pulling up the elevation, just give us a, a quick update on the changes that you've made since you were here last.
So we took under advisement, uh, the recommendation of the board, um, as far as the, uh, type of sign, the placement of the sign, and we worked with Verizon, um, on the presentation, uh, trying to meet their branding, uh, requirements. Um, and we looked at the placement of the sign on the white panels, um, and as far as, like, positioning over the door, or positioning it over the window, they looked off balance, and so, we decided that the best way, that the best look for the, the two signs, is to make the one on the roadside flush right, and the one on the parking lot side flush left, which is what we provided, um, taking the panels, meeting them on the corner, and mitering the corner for a nice clean look.
Great. Thank you, any questions? Doug?
No, thank, thank you for, thank you for working with us on this, sure.
All right, then with that, I will make a motion to approve the site plan for the two new attached signs to the building, last dated five fifteen, twenty twenty-five, with the following findings and conditions. Findings, this applicant has worked with the planning board to present a sign that has reasonable compatibility with the area and the building, in light of the rebranding desires of the user. This matter is exempt from Onadog County Planning Board referral. All right. This board has reviewed the S E A F of applicant dated fourteen, twenty twenty-five, and granted negative secret declaration for this unlisted action. This approval is made with the further condition that this approval is for plans and other submitted documents, site plan documents that have been signed by the planning board chairperson, and the applicant requires that all work shown be completed by the applicant in order for a certificate of occupancy or compliance to be issued. Any changes, additions, or deletions to the scope of work, materials, from the site plan, documents are not approved and are subject to further site plan review pursuant to town of DeWitt, section one ninety-two dash one twenty-two, questions?
Are they relocating the cameras, like?
Yes, there's a note that determine where they can.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions? Motion to approve? Um, Kevin will second, all in favor, aye?
Doug aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you talking.
So, next up, we've got Candidate with Bank.
Good evening, this is Ed Kaplinger from Kaplinger Freeman Associates, and, uh, Jeff Taw from Homes Can Call, cause Architects is on the line as well.
Good evening. Wonderful, I'll ask you to provide kind of same, couple minute quick update.
Sure, um, well, since we were last before the board, uh, we provided a response letter to some minor comments that the board had, that was submitted back on May twenty-seventh. Uh, we went to the Z B A, the June Z B A meeting, we received two variances, one for a spec, uh, specific permit for a drive-through, the other for a building greater than, uh, five thousand square feet in an S B P district.
And just to be clear, add those weren't variances, they're both special use permits.
Special, oh yeah, special, yes, um, but we did receive both of those, so, um, and we submitted drawings last week, I think we've addressed all the comments, and we're pretty close to the finish line.
All right, uh, notes I've got on mine, you did add the house shields to the lights facing towards the neighborhood?
We did.
Okay, and then?
We added screening around the, uh, mechanical unit in the back.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? Doug, good?
No, I'm good, I, I just had one comment on the resolution prior to the meeting.
And I think, um, that is.
Yeah, I added a sentence in there.
Yep.
Okay.
So this, this is one we didn't read, no? Okay. All right, I'll read the resolution, Doug, and then if there's changes that you wanna make, that were captured, let me know.
Okay.
All right, so Candidate with Bank, motion to approve the site plan last revised six twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, with the following findings and conditions. This applicant has presented a plan for an out parcel on the Wegmans Plaza site on East Jemsey Street. This board reviewed the application with specific view towards its compatibility with the shopping plaza, the overall site circulation, pedestrian accessibility within the plaza, and parking requirements. Although this plan shows leased parking spaces specific to this use, this is merely guidance to the board that demonstrates sufficient parking adjacent to this use, however, because this is a plaza, the entirety of the parking in the plaza is considered shared and part of the overall plaza use. Parking shown on the overall site is sufficient for the uses currently present at, in the plaza, including this new bank use. Although the design guidelines discourage the use of stone mulch, uh, this board has determined that the proposed two to three inch size washed rubber stone mulch proposed for the planting bed adjacent to the building is appropriate for use on this site. This building recommended, uh, this board recommended, and the zoning board of appeals granted a specific use permit, which was required for a drive-through incidental to a bank, and for a building size over five thousand square feet in the special business transitional district. This board has reviewed the Onadog County Planning Board referral of May twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, which noted that the referral will have no significant adverse inter-community or county-wide implications. This board has reviewed the S E A F of applicant dated April twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and grants a negative secret declaration for this unlisted action. No signs are approved, conditions, no signs are approved as part of this approval, the applicant must return to this board for approval of any signage. This approval is made with the further condition that this approval is for plans and other submitted documents, site plan documents that have been signed by the planning board, chairperson, and the applicant, and requires that all work shown be completed by the applicant in order for a certificate of occupancy or compliance to be issued. Any proposed changes, additions, or deletions to the scope of work, material from the site plan documents are not approved and are subject to further site plan review pursuant to town of DeWitt code, section one ninety-two dash one twenty-two. Motion?
And, can we just, can we just add limited use of stone mulch, just to kind of clarify that it is, it is in fact a, it is limited use around the building?
Yeah, I would say limited to where it's shown on this, this set right now, because there is, uh, mulch out in the islands, which is compatible with the rest of the plaza, this is just right adjacent to the building.
Right. Thank you, and I, I'm happy to make a motion then.
Okay, Doug will move, I will second, all in favor?
Doug aye.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Taco Bell. I'll do the same, you've worked tirelessly with this board. To get this one as far as we have, so I'd ask you just to kind of give a, a quick update.
Absolutely.
Over there.
Site plan, sheet C four.
Like Doug might be at a Taco Bell right now.
I'm definitely sweating like you guys, though.
Just kind of quickly to cover some of those changes we've made since our last workshop meeting last week, um, or a couple of weeks ago. Building has moved about twenty feet to the southwest to get it outside that existing national grid easement, and we have also rearranged the parking field to accommodate that nose-in parking at the north side of the property, as requested, and we also blocked out some of the parking at the southwest corner to accommodate some of that extra stacking for the drive-through itself. We've also gone back through, we've made sure that there's crosswalks at all the crossings across the site, and we've extended the sidewalk from marginal way into the site, as well as, with this note up here, a long marginal way to the property line contingent upon that D E C approval. Of that, we've also gone through, made sure that there's pedestrian crossing signage across the site, we've added some nothruck traffic signs going into the hotel parking, and we have also added wayfinding signage across the site. Can be seen on the sheet C thirteen, but we can get there, um, we've also updated the lighting plan to make sure that all of the access needs, uh, egress from the building, uh, complies with building code, we have one-foot candle at all of the doors, and no very little spill onto the New York State through, uh, New York State right-of-way. And then there were also some comments on the signage package, we could go to sheet C thirteen. Just to kind of show how we've changed some of those signage.
After the signs, John, can you talk about the lighting and what's been added since?
Yeah, absolutely. So we've gone back through, and we've modified the wayfinding signage to comply with that two square feet or less requirement, and we have also changed the monument sign down here to comply with the town's code. Just got the address on the base that'll match the building, and then we have removed drive-through on there, so it's just Taco Bell on the bell.
Okay.
And then, yeah, if we could go back to sheet C nine, I could.
We're talking about signage on, are we?
You got a chance to review the revised signage?
I have not, I don't know if you worked it before you even left, um.
We did.
You talking about the wayf?
Yeah, I mean, I.
The directional signage?
I, I don't know that everyone's had the chance to really look at the signage, um, and I, I guess at this point, I, I would recommend, because we need to double-check the, the sizes, make sure everything conforms, that perhaps, um.
You talking about the directional signage or the monument?
All of it.
Yeah, the monument didn't change size, right?
No, no, we just removed the drive-through off of it.
I guess the question is, so back to the monument sign, then, is this board satisfied with that monument sign, size and location and design? Cause we haven't spent a lot of time on the signage.
This is very similar to what's over on Thompson Road.
I, I understand, I'm just, I'm just, you know, wondering if, if we, if possible, and it's up to this board, we can approve everything else and, and just come back to the signs, you know, and, but. the signs, you know, and, but I don't know how comfortable everyone is with this, right? At this moment.
If you're open to it, that's the direction I'd like to proceed, give their office an opportunity to review the signage and get everything else approved, and then you wouldn't even need to be here, once we have an opportunity, we'll just convey to you whether there are any updates or whether we're going to move forward with it, and we can just do it as a procedural of the next.
Nor do you need the signs in the next two weeks, I'm thinking.
No, no, I think that'll be fine.
So we can, we can move forward without any signage today.
Yeah, absolutely, and the architecturals do show that updated signage on the building that we discussed last time, too, so that can be reviewed as well.
Yep, so that'll all be reviewed as part of the signage package.
And then quickly, just to kind of cover that lighting that we added, we added wall packs over the main entrance off of Bridge Street as well as the entrance off of marginal way, just to supply that extra lighting for ingress and egress, and we also updated that in the, in the architectural plans as well, so that's all representative.
You have the whole. Has that been reviewed, has that been reviewed? The lighting packs?
No, that, that's new, right? That just came in?
That is, yeah, we gave the cut sheets for everything as well.
I just wanted to talk, look at that.
Yeah, so we added these two wall packs here.
Have you run that by DOT just to make sure that the one on, on the bridge street side?
Yeah, we'll, we'll run it past them, we are well under a foot candle at the property line, I think we're just adding point, point two maximum here.
Point two?
Yeah.
And you're zero at marginal way?
Yeah.
Well, zero at that property line, we're well beyond zero at the road. You get low at zero.
So, do you want to look at all the lighting?
Yeah, I just, I wonder to look at it.
Okay, so we'll do same as the signage, we'll do signage and lighting.
Okay.
Again, you're not plugging this thing in in two weeks. But it'll give Eric and Lana an opportunity to look at it, digest it, make sure that we're good, two weeks, we can get those two pieces taken care of.
Absolutely.
Eric?
Yeah.
So those are some of the.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Doug, you good?
I'm good, thank you.
Alright. Put it on here, good, alright. I'm going to offer a motion to approve the plan, last dated 7/8/2025 with the following findings and conditions. Findings, this applicant has worked with the planning board to present a plan that is consistent with the intention of the town board and planning board to bring building uses closer to the street to encourage pedestrian access to the use. In that regard, sidewalks and other pedestrian-friendly amenities are part of this plan. The planning board recommended and the zoning board of appeals granted the following variances. A, a 25-foot variance from the code-required 35-foot front yard setback from the road, allowing for a 10-foot setback from Bridge Street. B, a 16-foot variance in the height of the building. And C, an 18-foot variance in landscape buffer allowing for a 2-foot landscape buffer along Enterprise Parkway. This board has reviewed the Onondaga County Planning Board resolution of March 27, 2024, which offered the following modifications. The applicant is required to coordinate Bridge Street access plans with the New York State Department of Transportation. To further meet department requirements, the applicant must submit a copy of the stormwater pollution prevention plan, traffic impact study for full build-out of the Taco Bell and future build-out of site, and lighting plan to the, to the department for review. This board adopts the condition that the New York State DOT must approve any traffic impact analysis and SWIP in connection with any permits given for the site. The board and the New York State Department of Transportation require that, require the installation of sidewalks within the state right-of-way along Bridge Street, and the town and applicant are advised that any work in the state right-of-way requires a highway work permit. Sidewalks have been required by site plan approval and are subject to DOT right-of-way permit requirements. Projects within an Onondaga County Drainage District that require a stormwater pollution prevention plan must submit a copy of the SWIP for the full build-out of the site to the Onondaga County Department of Water and Environment Protection for review. The community's value must ensure that any mitigation as may be determined by the department is required based on project plans prior to or as conditioned under municipal approval. This board accepts this condition and the SWIP as has been submitted. This board has reviewed the SEAF of applicant dated 2/23/2024, grants a negative secret declaration for this unlisted action. Conditions.
Is probably what you're going to change, no signs are.
Yes, again, no signs or lighting. So, conditions, no signs or lighting are approved except.
I think, I think we're just saying, no, not light.
No, except.
And then just the last one?
Yep, so no signs or lighting are approved at this time, any further signage must come before this board approval. Sidewalk is required to be installed from the east side of Marginal Drive, continuing through the driveway to the property line on Enterprise. This requirement is subject to DEC approval and a permit, as is all other work intended to be done in the DEC wetland and/or 100-foot wetland buffer, and this approval is subject to approval of said DEC permits. Subject to any conditions referred to in the discussion of the Onondaga County Planning Board matters set forth above, any lands reserved for future development or otherwise undeveloped on-site are not directly or indirectly approved by this board and future further development, if any, is subject to full site plan approval. This approval is made with the further condition that this approval is for plans and other submitted documents, site plan documents that are assigned by the planning board chairperson, and the applicant requires that all of the work shown be completed by the applicant in order for a certificate of occupancy or compliance to be issued. Any proposed changes, additions, or deletions to the scope of work or materials from the site plan documents are not approved or subject to further site plan review pursuant to Town and Dewitt Code, Section 192-122. Motion, Jenny, I will second, all in favor? Aye?
Doug I.
Great. Once they have an opportunity to kind of look at it, we'll let you guys know.
Okay.
But you can either show up online if you want.
Okay, that'll be at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Alright, next up we have amendment to the tile and marble project. You're welcome back again.
Thank you, thanks for having me.
Gudush yourself.
I'm Sam Ziegley of Surface Tile and Marble.
Okay. This was an application that we approved back in 2024. My understanding is value to pull the building permit in times, you're back for reapproval or extension of the building permit window. This one. Right, so.
Yeah, it's pretty self-explanatory.
It's pretty much what it is.
Yep.
Any questions, comments? No additions on this one? Alright, make it nice and easy, tile and marble reapproval. This application was before the board in 2024, and the site plan was approved on March 14, 2024. The applicant was unable to pull a building permit within six months as required by the town code. Accordingly, they have returned to this board for a reapproval of the site plan dated 2/18/2023, and the building elevation is dated 2/9/2024. And this board approves the said site plan and building elevations with the finding that the plans are unchanged from the prior recent approval, and there are no town code, town code modifications which would have an adverse effect upon the approval. The secret review was also completed as part of the March 14, 2024 approval. Accordingly, this board reapproves the site plan dated 2/18/2023, and the building elevation is dated 2/9/2024, and all findings and conditions of the March 14, 2024 approval remain in full force and effect and are unmodified. Motion to approve, Kevin? I will second, all in favor?
Doug I.
Great. Six months.
Thank you very much. Hope you get the air condition fixed.
You say the last thing is the background? I didn't catch the last of them all.
Next up we have Tech Bank LLC, applicant here.
Yes, on Zoom, hi.
How are you?
Hi, everyone, I'm good. So when we were added to this last minute, I was told I would be able to share my screen. Do I have permission to do so?
You should not do.
Oh, it said, it said host disabled participant screen sharing, so whoever's hosting has to allow me.
Yeah, we're working on it, give us a second.
Okay, sure, thank you, guys.
Be able to.
Appreciate it.
Okay, it is hard to see, but you should be able to now.
Okay, great. Okay, it is hard to see, our graphics are fun and bright, so hopefully we see something. So hi, everyone, my name is Sasha, I'm here to speak about our company Tech Back and ask for the board's recommendation to the ZBA. So as requested, I've put together a quick, I promise, 45-minute presentation to tell you who we are, what we do, an overview of our facilities and how we use them, and then can answer any additional questions the board may have. So at our core, we help small businesses and individuals responsibly park with our outdated electronics. Now, when you hear the noise, when you hear that we are a certified electronics recycler, a certain picture comes to mind, but our role is a mill man facilitator. So we do not accept items containing mercury or freon or loose lithium ion batteries, there's nothing toxic, there's no smelting or transformation of products on site, we're just light handling and mostly sorting is really what we do. There's no noise emissions or heavy machinery, we're quiet indoor operation, and we are definitely not a junk or collecting site. We are a high-touch upstream operation. Sorry, is someone able to mute?
Oh, no, I think it's actually noise from outside here.
Oh, oh, got it, got it, it's like blasting through speakers, okay, sorry.
We can hear you with that.
Great, amazing, thank you, thank you. Okay, so as an upstream recycler, we operate more like a tech company, not like a junkyard. So we help businesses, like schools, medical and government offices, legal offices, architect offices, nonprofits, et cetera. So we help them all responsibly and we securely let go of their outdated tech, and often at no cost to them. So how this works is, first we pick up electronics from local businesses, and we handle everything at their site, so from packing to transport. We then bring it back to our facility, and that's where we perform HIPAA-compliant certified data destruction, and it's held to the industry's highest standard. And anything that cannot be given a second life is then lightly dismantled and sorted by type. At that point, it's safely sent outside of Onondaga County to R2-certified downstream recyclers for actual breakdown, so that's where the like recycling part happens. So as an upstream recycler, we're the facilitator who helps those people get proper devices. So our role is keeping electronics out of landfill, but also supporting a circular local economy. Okay, so while our main service is working directly with local businesses, we do offer a limited public drop-off option, and this is for individuals or business clients who don't meet those pickup minimums for our free pickup service. So it's a smaller controlled part of our business, and it's designed to be like clean, monitored, and non-disruptive. Our drop-off is available during limited business hours, it's never overnight, never without staff. We provide monitored temporary drop-off bins that are rotated hourly, and next to those two bins are two reserved parking spaces. If someone has questions or needs help, they're welcome to come inside and they can drop off items in our lobby with staff assistance. So at, at 3:00 PM on the dot, all of our bins are removed and locked away, and we will have clear signage stating that drop-off is no longer permitted, and we'll have full floodlight coverage, 24-hour security camera monitoring, all of that, which brings us to our next section, which is our facility. So I know you said you couldn't really see clearly, I will be referring to the screen now and pictures, so let me know if there's anything I can do to help that. But Tech Back is located at 6464 Riding's Road, we're one minute from GM Circle, and we're within a designated industrial zone. So our site was selected specifically for its easy access to those business pickups. We share our building with three other tenants, our unit is located in the rear, and we're facing inward towards the parking lot, not towards the street. I've added a color overlay here, so you can see which side of the building we lease, and then this is Riding's Road where customers enter. The building has 45 parking spots, two of which, the two I just made green, are reserved for the client drop-off, although honestly, based on comparative companies, we expect no more than one customer at a time. Tech Back will use seven of these spots total, including all employees and customers, so we have a very light footprint on this actual space. In front of those two dedicated parking spaces is where we'll place our drop-off bins during set hours, and there are the two little blue boxes, I've added them to scale, so they're like pinpoint, so if you can't see my screen, you definitely can't see what I'm talking about. They're four feet by three feet in width, and they're located at the rear of the building. So here is a mock-up of our drop-off bins when viewed from the rear parking lot, and as you can see, they're over on the left side where they're orderly and not disruptive. So at the side of the building, for reference, this is where our lobby is for customers and clients who need assistance in front of that, in front of that glassy area. And then out of sight at the rear of the building are those two secure staff entrances you found our mock-up, and that's where the bins will be monitored and swapped, and our business pickups will be brought inside. So here's a view from the street, where you can see that any drop-offs or pickups will be sight unseen, our whole business, much to our surprise, is sight unseen unfortunately, but this is not our front entrance, what you're looking at here, this is our neighbor's Pharmalogic. And then here's the most extreme view from the street, where still, even at this view, any drop-offs or pickups are still sight unseen, that little red-yellow box is our front entrance for reference, so you can get a sense of the view from Riding's Road. Okay, so then the last part, a large part of our business is handling client-secure data, so we take onsite security very seriously. We have six high-resolution cameras that monitor all activity on-site at all hours of the day, and then floodlights already surround the building at night, it's one of the reasons we chose this space, so there's no visibility loss overnight. And what's also great is that our largest co-tenant Pharmalogic, they actually work on an opposite schedule, so they are onsite overnight into early mornings using that back lot, so we are never vulnerable to dumping or after-hours misuse, someone is always there. Okay, so in closing, we have taken care to make this a low-impact, well-managed, light industrial operation, and we look forward to being a good neighbor and responsible tenant here in Dewitt. As a secure state-certified data destruction partner, we hope to be a valuable asset to the small business community and have a positive impact on our local environment, because recycling rocks. So thank you so much for your time and support, and happy to answer any additional questions.
I am writing something. So it, we're, you know, I want the board to consider that if this goes to specific use permit, does it have to come back to this board, or are the things that are happening so innocuous on the exterior that no one cares here, but it's not part of?
You're not repainting the building, you're not adding new openings, you're not doing, you're not changing lighting, you're not re-striking the parking lot, you're not doing any of that stuff, correct?
You're not adding a dumpster?
Correct, yes, we are not adding or changing the facility in any way.
The security cameras, you said, sometimes they do require more lighting, you're good with what's there?
Yes, actually, our neighbor, the, the tenant that's in between us and Pharmalogic is a security company, so they had installed that system for their own security for the previous tenant, so it's already set up for that, so we don't have to do anything.
The, the two things that stuck out to me were, there are specific parking spaces, are they going to be labeled in any way?
Undecided if we will want to paint the color slightly different, I am not sure at this point if it will be necessary. It's basically that no one else in the building will park there that we share the space with since that back lot will be ours, so I think it might be more of an agreement situation and less of a painted thing at this moment. If it's something we feel that we need to address down the line because there is no compliance, it might be something we explore, but at this time, my answer is no.
There were, there were three tenants previously, three tenants now.
Now they're moving into an existing industrial building, so we.
The parking counts don't change any.
Not for this use, no.
No, I know, but I'm just.
Right. Are you proposing any signage?
Uh, yes, we will have, I think what's, what's. Yes, we will have, I think, what's considered temporary signage on the front. Our Thresh Industries, who we're leasing the building from, is not letting us do any sort of permanent kind of extruded or electrical signage.
Can you define temporary signage?
It would be a, oh dear, I can't remember the material. It's like a thin plastic quarter-inch material. Someone on the board might know better.
ACM.
Yes. Thank you, ACM. So it would be ACM that is hung on the exterior of the facility over our entrance or over our window.
So how is that temporary? Just that you're not like attaching it to the building and I guess.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. We haven't.
No, no, go ahead. Yeah, what's.
We haven't got, we're just a new business, so we haven't gotten to the installation yet. So what I can understand is that there might be channel hooks on the facade and then our sign would be hanging on the channel hooks because it would only weigh about 20 pounds. So I think that's what I mean by temporary is that it's not like permanently fixed. It's a hanging sign on the facade.
So I think that that would be considered a sign to us.
Yeah, our temporary signs per the code are allowed for new business enterprises for maximum of 14 consecutive days. So that's temporary. And there's, if you look at the code, there are restrictions on size. Are you talking about doing something for more than 14 days?
Yes, so it sounds like we would have to come back to the board and present our signage, is what I'm hearing.
Is there other building signage for the other tenants?
Well, no, there's no, because they're not necessarily public tenants. Pharmalogic makes radioactive drinks for hospitals at night. So they're like a pharmaceutical operation. They don't want anyone visiting them, so that's why the front of the building is very discreet.
So because this is a multi-tenant building, would we need to do a multi-tenant sign package if they're the only ones with signage on the building?
Well, I think the purpose of the multi-tenant sign package is to establish it for the building regardless of how many people are doing it, right?
Yeah, so.
So we would be the only tenant with signage, so it would not be a question of aesthetic matching in that regard.
Well, tell Pharma whatever moves out and somebody else moves in and they want to put a sign up too.
You would be setting up the signage for the building. So you might want to just tell the person you're leasing from, hey, I'm turning in this signage request and it's a multi-tenant signage. So if you lease to somebody else, they have to follow the signage standard.
So a multi-tenant sign package is a site plan application to this board. That can be done independently of the special permit that you're going for right now. You can apply for a multi-tenant sign package that, and have you talked to Eric in my office? At all? I'm not sure he's.
Uh, no.
Not about signs.
Okay, well, Eric or Julie in the office can help you go through what we need for that. But yeah, you can apply for that separately.
Okay, so question just before we close on that. If you said that the only circumstance that would be an issue was if Pharmalogic left the facility, could it be a situation where we have our signage and then if a new tenant moves in, our signage is removed?
No, we were trying to just give an example. If you look up the multi-tenant sign package in our, on our website, it would be more helpful than us trying to throw out multiple examples.
It basically makes it so that if there is in the future multiple signs on the building, since there are multiple tenants, that they're have the same look, the same type of lighting, the same type of letters, that sort of thing, so it looks consistent.
Understood.
Sasha, can you go back to the slide that had the hours of operation on it?
Uh, yes.
8:00 AM to 3:00 PM, Tuesday to Friday.
Are there any other questions on the operation here?
I guess a question for Jamie is, since these are some pretty specific operational hours and just their operation in general, is that something that should be part of this recommendation for the special use permit? Like, should it be incorporated into the approvals?
Yes, it's certainly up to you. I think that certainly the period of time that the bins can be outside. I'm not so sure the hours, but that's, if you think that's important, we can make that recommendation.
Yeah, I think, but isn't this industrial?
Yeah, it's industrial, so.
I mean, I do, I do think it should because, you know, yeah, I think that these are very workable and I think it makes the site acceptable to me. So, but I do think it just needs to be memorialized in the.
Yeah, so we'll add a provision in there that they're only allowed outside between 8:00 AM and 3:00 PM.
Can we extend their hours to like?
Those are the hours that they're operating.
So they want to change their hours, they got to come back.
I'm just curious, sorry, sorry, I'm so sorry to interrupt. I'm just curious, like, does that mean that if we ever wanted to extend our hours to like 4:00 PM for a client that we would need to get some beforehand? Like, is there any way to give us some leeway? These are the hours that we want to have, but I also don't want to be going against an ordinance if we end up having.
How would you word that at this point? Because, you know, if we were to say 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, but they're only open until 3:00, then all of a sudden the bins could be out post-closing.
Well, that's an enforcement issue.
And this isn't talking about when people could drop off if you had someone special coming into the building, right? It's just when the bin would be outside?
Those are operational hours.
I don't know that.
Joe, these are, sorry, no, these are bin hours. So we, our operational hours are separate indoors, but these are the hours when the bins.
Would you be comfortable with bin hours 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM?
Sure.
And then it comes, this is a recommendation. It's going to come up again at the zoning board. They're the ones who finally decide.
Yeah, no, that's totally fine. I just wanted to make sure that if we do end up having them outside for another 30 minutes, for whatever, if it's Memorial Day or something, you know.
Okay. I'll work anyway, but. All right, so in a second, I will offer a motion to the zoning board. Do we feel, I think you raised a question, does this need to come back to us?
Yeah, I think we're probably saying no, that there's nothing else.
So after ZBA, they should be able to, they'll have the change of use.
Yes, they would just have to apply for a multi-tenant sign package before doing signage.
So no signage would be allowed. I think we'll capture that in here. No signage is allowed. You'll have to do the multi-tenant sign package, but there's no reason to come back to us from there. Okay.
Jenny.
Probably to get air.
Borden, we need to wait for our board member to get back before we.
Here she comes.
Proceed.
Sorry. Drive to Detroit, Minnesota.
Stand next to a freezer somewhere?
I should have like been sitting there running my arms under cold water.
Okay, motion for a positive recommendation to the zoning board of appeals for a specific use permit for the use as defined. Disposal, storage, or processing of toxic waste, medical waste, garbage, or other refuse or waste products of every kind and nature. This is what falls under that specific use permit language for your project. It is recommended that this specific use permit carry conditions appropriate for this use that will have drop-off areas and visits by the public, including the following. No outdoor storage is permitted onsite. The bins that will be temporarily quote-unquote stored outside may be three foot by four foot only and on rollers and made of plastic. The bins may be put out at 8:00 AM and removed and brought indoor by 5:00 PM each day. And no signage will be permitted unless approved by this board. There are no exterior improvements required to the facility, so no further site plan is required from this board. Recommendation to the ZBA. Any questions? Kevin's good first. I'll go second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, yes.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we should mention always say that.
She said yes, though, at that time.
What, what did I say?
Said yes and said aye.
You didn't say Doug aye, which we.
We want you to always say Doug aye.
We want you to always say that.
All right, next up we have the Saab test facility. This is a preliminary presentation.
Oh, it's about time, Jim.
Yeah, updating plans.
Yeah, we've been waiting up there.
Good evening. Ryan Worland, I'm the builder's, or the owner's rep from Saab.
Ryan, sorry, it's the one hang you dumped on the line.
Oh, he changed it up on me.
Yeah. No, 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 I think it's, isn't it the one on the right?
I thought it was the one on the right, I think.
Yeah, we know that. They changed it on me too.
Did you guys change my headphones too?
No.
We want to wait until the air conditioner's off to see what we see.
Because when I wrote the note the other day, there was.
Now I got everyone that.
We could hear you.
They wanted to test it because they were too close.
Sorry, all yours. We're just getting a little heat stroke in here.
I know, I am too. Ryan Worland, I'm with Saab. Rob with me tonight are the facilities director, Cliff Pelton, and Jeff Bolter, who's our lead engineer, lead engineer or design engineer for inside the facility through Oknapp. And then, great, well, most of you'll know General Parenting, and then Rob from EDR. Brief intro to the facility. What we're looking to do is expand the capabilities that we currently have in Syracuse for our active and passive radar sensor systems. We have a customer who's asked us to do some additional work for them. What we'll do inside this facility would be essentially three parts. One part will be a repair depot. So if a customer purchases equipment from us, they have it on the field and they use it and need it either upgraded or repaired, they ship it back to us and we fix it. We're not manufacturing anything in there. We're just essentially fix it, put it together, take it apart, et cetera. The second part, there's a training aspect to this where either we'll be training our own people on the product or we'll be training the customer's personnel. If they need training on the product, something they've never seen before, they'll come to our facility and be trained on. And the last part, essentially it's an office area. In the front part, there's an office as well as there's a mezzanine office space where some of our personnel will work. So that's the large, you know, the large overview of it. From a, from a security perspective, what we've submitted in the packet, the fencing that we have in the packet is almost identical to the picture you saw earlier. We got that from the board in a previous meeting. So that will go around three sides of the facility. Coming off this side around to the west and then wrapping back around to this side of the building. The front side of the building will not be fenced in. We're only looking to add a very small amount of pavement in this area where we can put, so we can get loading docks in. One of the things we have to do for the facility is we need to put a bridge crane inside because one of the products that we're looking at bringing in is fairly large and is very heavy. So being able to back a tractor-trailer all the way inside, shut the door, and then unload off of either flatbed or lowboy is a requirement. And the other door is just a standard backup. Truck dock. Dock, truck dock, dock. So I think I'll stop there because everybody is having heat stroke, I think, or maybe I'm about to. And then I'll pass it to General.
Do you want to text height or do you want to text building?
Sure, I think Ryan hit the highlights more.
You know, the only new pavement is at the front. Fence wraps around. The site in the back. Stormwater management was a big challenge on this site. There's not a lot of available space, so we have fire detention in the back. So a portion of the roof is directed there. And then we have detention on the south side and a portion of the roof is directed there as well as the pavement runs off into there. In addition to the fence for screening, we have pretty heavy vegetation around the front and also in the back to help screen the use from 41 on ramp. And that's some ornamental decorative plantings around the main entrance. I think that's, those are the highlights. There's not a lot of major changes from what's there today, other than kind of freshening things up. We are reconfiguring the entrance. Right now it has kind of that wishbone split driveway. So we're just cleaning that up and making it more straight-on entrance. But the location doesn't change. We're still at the light.
Mark, you're on online. Do you have any comments or questions?
No, I mean, I've looked at the SWIP and it seems reasonable. And I've provided some comments, which I believe have been forwarded to the applicant.
Did you see Mark's comments?
Yes, I have Mark's comments and I got Eric's with Eric Lanas. Yeah, I don't think there were any major questions that we had. They were all pretty straightforward.
Can you update us on the sewer and?
Yeah, so.
Line and kind of.
Yes. So right now, the building is serviced by a septic field, which is in this area. We obviously need that space for the truck turnaround. We also need to lower the grade. It's a raised bed system, so that needs to all come out. There's a six-inch force main on the opposite side of the columnar. We've been coordinating with Doug Miller and we've submitted the capacity assurance request from the county. So that's in process. Mark has requested some details for the connection. The sanitary will come out of this corner of the building, be pumped across the street and then we'll tie in and then it goes that way under 41 and is serviced by the metro at downtown.
We're fine, we're fine with that.
All right.
So have you confirmed the turning radius swing back out of the building? Yeah, we, yeah, that's in the package. Yeah, we submitted a turning radius diagram. But yeah, the trucks will come in this way, back in, and pull out here. So there's two rolling gates at the entrance to the loading dock area. Yeah, and we should point out also that there's no truck parking there overnight. This is back into the truck dock, unload and it leaves. Or a truck would be fully inside of the building. There'd be nothing parked outside at night. And we're coming in on that front end because from a structural standpoint, it's only a practical place related to it. I tend to get the bridge crane inside.
So as a segue between the two scopes of work here, if we can talk a little bit about the uses inside the building and how it impacts parking on site and what the plan for all of that is. Because you do fences which cut off some of the parking and some of the other areas and what they're going to be used for and how it's all in the works.
Yeah, so, you know, we've calculated based on the zoning requirements for parking at Q12 where that if we calculate for code, you know, we very well may have more people here, but we don't. We don't, based on their program and their needs, there's probably less than even what the code, what the zoning is recording for us. I go to a plan and we'll talk about that a little bit. Yeah, so here, so here, as I spoke of, we have a loading dock here with a four-foot platform here that we assess scissors lifts and take anything off of a truck here. We can bring in a full-size truck in here. This area here is a bridge crane to unload that. And some of these trucks will actually have equipment on them and be serviced. It's not just unloading a truck. The truck may stay in there for some period of time, weeks, or not, or not. Some storage, some of the repair areas that Ryan spoke about. This is some training. There'll be some truck-type units in here that will be part of the training on how to service those in the field. So that they'll get hands-on experience of servicing and repairing the equipment before it goes out to the field. Again, an office component here, some engineering, and then up on this, that city exists in the building now. Some additional office space. There's, um, some hoteling area here, but there's also, uh, probably more workstations that are capable of putting in here that will actually be in, or actually maybe been put in. They give us some people working remotely. There are people that are here some days and not all days, so, uh, we don't anticipate that every, every workstation would actually be itself indoor occupied.
Based on the uses? I can, yeah, I can tell you.
Yeah.
So I, I think from a use perspective, if we break this down into three zones, because it's kind of what we have to do. This front, well, mechanical here, this zone right in this area, that is essentially, oh, actually, take one step back. This zone right here, this band is what you call, um, de-scroll.
Yeah, we missed part of the plan.
De-scroll up a little bit.
There you go.
There we go. I was completely thrown off. This, this area right here, essentially we call this an unclear area. So if we had a customer coming in, but they weren't cleared, or maybe it was a vendor wanted to come in, and they weren't clear to see anything else inside the facility, they can come in to reception and they can get this far, but they can't get any further into the building. So, uh, hoteling space, meeting space, um, really just like a security guard and admin person. That's all it's up for. The second area, in this area, from the training area, later training around this side, that's all training area. What we expect to see at maximum would be two classes at a time, but that would be maybe a year or two away. So one, a class would be probably fifteen people. So if you think about, it's a fifteen person class, they're either in the classroom, or they're out here training, or they're in here training. They're not, it's not, there's not forty-five people. It's, they're, they're moving from place to place. So what you're going to have is a pretty large area that looks, you know, it's very open, bottom line. And the last area, the production, uh, equipment test area back here, think of that as a, as a fully secured location. So if you're a, if you're a visitor, you can't get back there. If you're a student, you can't get back there. It's only employees, Saab employees that have badges that have a need to go back there and work. So those would be the three areas. Everybody comes in through the front, through a secure entry, and then either goes into work to here, or they're a student and they go off to the side. And Mr. Brown, I also, you made a comment earlier about the, the fencing, and I would like to, I'll address that. And I'll pause for questions. Did, did I?
Yeah, I think what I'm, the, between the two of you guys, with the, with the programming inside and understanding the uses, the amount of people that are going to be there, what that then does to the parking counts outside? Because you have part of the parking which is behind the fencing area, part of the parking which is in front of the fencing area, it's a secure, so how, how's that all operate? Because my understanding is you partially train outside as well, in that parking area?
So, we had a, I wasn't going to come, open this up, but I, I will open it now, because Rob and I had a conversation today. If you go back to the exterior site plan, so what we got back, and Rob, bail me out if I, if I mess this up. So in conversations with Aqua over the last couple of days.
This morning.
Okay, so Aqua came back this morning, and there's, there's a, there's a right of way for a water main, or a easement for a water main that runs right along the building. Their feedback to us was they would not accept any fencing that crossed that easement, and there was even some questions about why, right?
Yeah, we're going to meet with them.
So, what we have already decided to do, and this will require a slight adjustment of site plan, will remove this fence here, and have it run, connect here where it is, down the outside of the building, and then just connect to the building. It'll leave about a fifty to fifty-five foot opening or space between.
Can you trace that again? Sorry, on the screen.
Can you see me doing it?
No, no.
See me doing it.
So I'll, I'll. You trace it with your hand.
I might go, I'll just do this. So, so if you come off the building right here, go out right about there, and then go up to the fence line.
So everything from there to the east and down around the bottom, that?
It'll be open. So to answer your question, you know, the, the question about inside the fence parking versus outside, now all the parking is outside the fence.
It's all outside, okay. So now all of that parking is accessible to whatever classes and offices?
Yes.
Everything that's there. I mean, part of our concern was, you get the fence there with good chunk of that parking behind a secure fence, right? How is it going to be utilized?
Yeah, well, we'll still have, there still will be a space here where we will have an outside training potential area. There'll be inside a secure fence, because there's no parking in that.
Will that become impervious, um, paved area, or?
We're, we're going to try to do a permeable, permeable.
Okay.
So what's, what do you think you are going to be able then to get in there for parking, or what's your plan for how much parking? Now that you're changing things around?
A little seventy-seven.
You can be at one seventy-five.
Yeah, the, the totals are on here now. It's kind of small.
You hit more than what we thought we needed.
Yeah, I think we're at one seventy-eight, required is one seventy-five.
It's scoot over a little bit, I'll be able to.
No, we're. Parking charts are on the side.
And the required parking, did you, like, recompute some of that with the square footage? As I know some of the areas, like, that you were just showing us, that big training area, and the last set of plans showed a storage, just as far as working with the square footage.
Yeah, I, um. We have, we have a color.
We have a.
And we're going to digest this all kind of in a bigger picture, that if Saab leaves, we've got to make sure that we're paying attention to.
Sure.
What a future use might be. So we're not going to under.
Yeah, and they're going to be coming back to you anyways, so.
Right.
I don't know.
Did you reduce that a little bit?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is, you know, these are the numbers that we, we, we took a look at this as storage. Uh, essentially, storage over here, industrial, and then the grade is, is used in office use. Based on that is, that's how we came up with the one seventy-five parking space number.
So what delineates the difference between storage and industrial?
This is where, the industrial is where the repairs are being made. Uh, this is really things coming off of a truck, and this is more of a storage area, storage depot, uh, here. This, um, essentially because it's part of the training, but all, we're really just parking.
From a, from a delineation perspective, there, this, there's going to be a wall.
It is a wall.
That goes for a ceiling.
So that, I was thinking the other way.
Yeah, so the other way, this right here is going to be secure depot storage, so fenced. Is it, we're required by the customer to have a fenced, completely secure segregated area for what's inside there. And then the bridge crane, not putting a whole lot there anyway. And then we still have.
So there is a delineation. I think what, it's not just some arbitrary line painted on the floor, or?
Right, the only, the only place I could not answer that would be like, right there.
No, but I mean, I'm looking between the industrial and between the.
Yeah, I mean, it, the bridge crane, the bridge crane really ends there.
Right, but they're a fence. There's something, there's some physical barrier that's a reason to.
There's fencing here, yeah, there are some physical barriers. It's not a wall. This is the only fully wall separating that area.
The storage.
And obviously, these have walls on them.
For the storage areas, what are you using to compute the parking? Like, what are you calling them per code? You call them.
For storage, we were, we were using, uh, employees, so what we're saying basically, storage.
You're considering them like a warehouse?
Yeah, and, and, and based on Ryan's information, we're using like ten employees for the store.
How's that work with the training in warehouse areas?
We're, we're using that space just to store the vehicles.
Yeah, we're really storing, I mean, there's, there's.
So that, that goes back to my comment.
Again, back to before, that anybody's training. It's like, we get in here, it won't be different people in the training versus where the trucks are.
So there's, yeah, did that answer the question? What Jim just said?
I understand what you're saying. What about that smaller, uh, training area, the rectangle kind of on the bottom by the train?
It's here?
Yeah.
Again, it's the same, it's the same, same.
That grouping of fifteen people that you talked about before, is either migrating between there, there, there.
Yeah, they're here, they're here, or they're here.
They're not going to have three different classes. It sounds like there's one class of fifteen people that. Have access to any one of those.
That warehouse.
The gray areas are our classroom space.
You know what, we're going to.
Yeah.
The blue areas are.
Decisions like that, but we'll figure it out.
Right. Of the same type of class on that. But they're not running simultaneously, so they're running. Yep. Okay. Yeah, we'll look at, we'll look at these, we'll look at the arcing counts and everything there, I think, taking into account that we don't have a fence outside. Makes it a little bit easier.
It helps.
Uh, let's talk about architecture.
Um, yeah, if you can go back. So, uh, there's a, uh, there's elevations, and there's also just a rendering.
Go back to that same file, though.
So, you know, right now we have a twenty-five plus year old, uh, pre-engineered metal building. Metal skin is, is, it's showing a lot of wear, um, and the roof as well. What we'd like to do, if you go back to our rendering, is we're looking at different ways to re-clad the building. So again, the truck, the trucks over here fencing, we have some screening, because there'd be some, some equipment over in this location. But we want to re-clad with the metals, um, metal, metal cladding system, just to give it a new, fresh look. Uh, we're working with a couple, with our contractor and a couple of different suppliers, whether it's an insulated or if we're just a metal panel, we insulated side. Uh, we haven't made those decisions yet, but we just want to get the whole building a new, fresh exterior. The CMU can be painted or coated, but everything up above that is going to give it a new, kind of look.
And screen all the mechanical, that's.
Screen all the mechanicals. There's some on the backside that will be screened by our fence and by the highway that, that it won't be. But anything that can be.
What is that screening material?
This is just a, a metal, a metal fence system.
Okay.
And the dumpster enclosure and our transformer pad, which is out over here, will all have similar screening materials. And there's no signage requirement, other than just an address. So we won't be coming in for any, any signage package.
They don't want to be identified.
They don't need to be.
Actually, the existing monuments, like.
What, uh, what are you proposing for the roof system? Sorry, I didn't hear that part.
Uh, right now we're looking at a couple of different options, whether we, um, code and seal what's there, or whether replace it, or replace it with an insulated panel, so, uh, to be determined, and we'll provide information as it's, uh, as it's developed.
So it's either existing, cleaned up, or new?
Yeah, it, it'll be a standing rip seat.
Replacing kind of, basically.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, essentially, uh, essentially a new building when all is said and done. And if you know the building, there's no slab in most of the building now, so obviously we have a, a new slab throughout the building. And, uh, pretty extensive work inside.
Okay. Any other questions?
Can we talk about wetlands and the status of, like, are you applying for wetland permit, or?
Yeah, so, um, we had submitted the, um, I forget the terminology of the project.
PJD.
Eric came back and said, you know, if you do an assessment, get that on the plan. So we've done that, we did the fieldwork, did the mapping, that's on the plans we submitted. We're in the process of writing the delineation report now. That's going through QACUC right now, and then we're going to submit that to DEC. And Eric said you need, um, confirmation that that's sent in.
Yeah, can we get a copy of that, too?
Yeah, once it's, once it's sent in, yeah, I mean, yep. We, we know we're going to have buffer impacts. We, we are not proposing any direct wetland impacts.
Great. Good. It's coming along. So I think we'll, uh, we'll talk and figure out. I think your next would be first part of, I think it'll be in July, August?
Yeah.
Get that timeframe in there, but we'll get the rest of the timeframe laid out for you.
What's the next mission to twenty-fifth, maybe two weeks? Two weeks, one today.
Twenty-four.
Alright. Yep.
Another round of comments?
Get all this.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, appreciate it, though, for your, uh.
We charge extra for the sauna treatment.
Alright, last up, we have a concept presentation for Ironhorn Enterprises.
Thank you.
Aye, guys.
Good evening, Greg Scrumo from Don Scrumo Engineers, representing Ironhorn. So if I can, uh, can't remember the exact company I used it before, but it's essentially a, uh, predominantly a warehouse from this point over. Uh, this area in here is currently a series of offices, and the, kind of a showroom type area in this portion. We are looking to, uh, uh, we have a tenant, they are, uh, they're a division of ABC Roofing. They actually, what they do is, uh, it's not roofing, it's, uh, sheet rock insulation, metal studs, very similar to, um, ships and wholesalers, or.
Ships and metacar.
If they're familiar with that. So they are going to have a, a, basically an order desk, showroom area here, some offices in this area here, and that, and this will be, remain as a warehouse where the sheet rock insulation, metal studs, and some other items will be stored. There are four loading docks, um, in this location here. They're the four foot, like, standard loading docks for tractor trailers. We are looking at installing a ramp, which is a little over fifty feet long, to get down from that four feet down to the gray parking lot. They, um, are looking to install a fence around, around here. Uh, it's primarily so that, to kind of keep people out and protect their trucks and anything like that. And, um, we will have a, uh, a dumpster on site in this location here. And, uh, we are removing, uh, some pavement in this location, just because it's not really functional, because of the utility pole that's, uh, kind of, uh, too hard to move that way. It's a pretty substantial pole. Surface building in the transformer area there. And all in all, there is, uh, it's a zoned industrial, so it's allowed use. It is per code, requires thirty-six parking spaces when you do a combination of warehouse and office use. They will have twelve employees. I'm going to say it's probably maybe like half, uh, office and warehouse, the other half is, uh, truck drivers and, um, uh, forklift operators. So what, what happens is they have trucks that come in, those trucks get loaded up, they go out for deliveries, they're like the boom trucks, that sort of thing. Um, and then also clients are able to come in, uh, parking here, get loaded up on their truck or trailer, or pulling hair in order and that sort of thing, and, uh, go off the site. So that it's, uh, it's pretty minor use. They're not looking to change much in the exterior, other than adding a loading dock door here to accommodate the ramp. The ramp is going to be a concrete ramp, it's a permanent fixture.
Are they going to be parking trucks on site?
Yes, uh, trucks will be parked in this area here. So typically, they're there overnight, in the morning when they're being loaded, then they go off.
Is there any parking there currently that the ramp is now taking up?
No, I don't think so. It's just a wide open parking.
Does it affect the traffic pattern at all?
No, they, they are able to get eighteen-wheelers in and out of here. They added a, previously added a little gravel patch here, probably to help the turning, boom, it's probably a little narrow. But other than that, uh, they have, uh, this is all going to be employee parking and, uh, in the back there. We are asking to bank some parking here, primarily it's a nice tree there, I don't want to take down. Um, we are asking to bank some parking here. Uh, primarily it's a nice tree there. I don't want to take down. Um, and they don't feel they 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 really need that parking. It's not uh.
How much parking will you have up front? You're gonna have two ADA and?
Five spaces, yeah.
Have an island or something to block off those two that look like they're just going into adjacent.
These here?
Yeah.
We're gonna take it right out.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I wouldn't mind necessarily leaving them, but they just don't, they don't have a sufficient aisle width and you know, like this 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 space here actually kind of. I mean, I could do it with a smaller vehicle. I couldn't do it with a full-size pickup truck easily. Um, so we were just gonna take that out and there's a nice tree right here. So you know, trying to avoid that.
Right, can you, I missed this. Sorry, my brain is melted at this point. Um, you kind of break down the square footage of office and did you say someone's warehouse and?
Yeah, I.
How you get in that parking count?
So if I do roughly, we've got uh, basically a hundred and ten by two hundred. So you're looking at the twenty-two thousand square feet of warehouse. Um, and then this here is uh, forty by a hundred and twenty-seven. So you're looking at uh, five thousand square feet of office at that place.
So um, for, okay, so.
For a house.
The warehouse is based on your employee count?
Yes. Yeah.
So warehouse, you need two for each employee. So that would be twenty-four spaces.
It's true.
For a warehouse?
For warehouse?
Two spaces.
You said twelve employees?
Yeah, that's total.
Okay, so you're saying two employees in the warehouse?
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe two to three at the most.
Okay. So two to three employees in the warehouse, so you're saying?
Alright, so let's say, let's say three in the warehouse, three truck drivers and then the rest are the files.
So you're saying you need six warehouse spaces?
No.
How many?
Three, three, well.
How many employees for the warehouse?
Three warehouse spaces, three truck driver spaces, but you want to include in the art warehouse, that's fine.
So for warehouse, you need two for each employee?
Just in case we can't sabotage.
No, per employee.
Yeah, two spaces per employee.
The truck drivers are part of the office employees.
How many did, how many spaces did you say you have for a warehouse?
Well, I don't, I don't have, I don't.
Three now.
I mean, we know, we know where the office function is, we know where the warehouse function is.
And I and I just got floor plans today, so I can, you know, sure.
Okay. Yeah, if you can do like and do your table and do all that, that would be helpful.
Yeah, and there was a lot more offices before I can, I can.
Okay, yeah, if you can just do that breakdown and show us the square footage and the required, that'd be great.
The fence is six foot high.
Not, it's not anything massive, it's just more to just keep people.
And what is the fence?
Chain link.
It's industrial.
It's industrial.
I mean, there, I mean, you know, if you want to shield anything, it.
That's in the front of the building also?
I'd wanna shield the people over here, but we're not gonna worry about that.
You go to.
Yeah.
I think honestly, we should push this and use that security fence.
They should pay us.
But I mean, at worst, even just along the street front, it's to use the security and then you can run chain back.
I mean, do you want black vinyl or something?
No.
I don't like that at all.
No, I mean, you saw the the security.
I I really didn't, I I didn't see exactly what it was.
Yeah, it's, it's just a, it's an aluminum security fence with.
Well, setting to maybe have a nice cut sheet on it, send out everyone.
Tink in top. And there, it fits more with town style than chain link. I I think chain link is probably.
Especially at the front of the building, it makes more sense. If you were doing that back way.
Right. So just that that run.
You're saying just.
That run done with that, with that type of fencing, run chain the rest of the way back. Through there.
Especially if you have a gate, you know, like we did some other stuff with gates before where the chain link added a lot of weight and we couldn't do it. We had to change it out anyway.
Right.
But, yeah.
Alright, I mean, it's all concepts, so you'll get us the the layouts.
It's all, it's all starting.
Sure.
Um, get us an updated table for parking just to help us get through that. Uh, no other modifications of the building?
No, other than, other than, I mean, they're they're like, and they're taking out a bunch of the offices and redoing this.
Exterior though.
No, not that I know of, no.
HVAC improvements?
Yep, probably.
On top of the building, outside of the building?
If you put it inside the building.
Yeah.
I'll find out.
If they're outside, if they're on the roof, they'll need to be screened.
Sure, that I understand.
If they're on the ground, they need to be screened.
Screen them.
I'll find out, I'll find out what they're doing. I mean, I would imagine that there's, I don't know if they're changing, I have no idea if they're changing any of the existing units itself. But I mean, they're gonna be modifying ductwork and that sort of thing on the inside for sure. Looks like electrical sherpies because all of them were there and I think they're keeping the same path though, so. But on the outside, the only, the only we're doing is this ramp and. The door.
You may need to look at those exterior existing light bulbs in the back of the site just for your your light spread at the proper line.
Okay.
Any other thoughts or?
I think this point, we'll digest this conversation. We'll take a look at it. We'll give you a set of comments.
Awesome.
Go from there.
Perfect.
Great, you.
And if you wanna email Eric and he can send you the cut sheet for the fence that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Think anything else from this board other than fix the air conditioning?
I emailed them right before the meeting started and they said it's that's going to our house.
And this is like insane.
Yeah, it's it's been like three for us, so.
Well, Doug, thank you for being on. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. I'm gonna sign off. Have a good night.
Well, hold on.
You say Doug bye?
We're gonna close the meeting. Doug's gonna first, I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Doug aye.
Doug aye.
Thank you, Doug. Now you can go.
Thanks, Doug.
Okay, bye bye.
Appreciate it.
Oh, my God.